Charter Township Applied Board of Trustees. It is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We could please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of the Pledge to the Fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, please let the record show that we are all present. And we're going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to the approval of the agenda. I think it's good the way it is. I don't know if anyone has anything they'd like to add or delete.
I'll make a motion and we approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Announcements, communications. Anyone have anything they'd like to announce? We've got some big ones coming up, so... Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to call the public. This is when you come up and talk about non-agenda-related items. And please take three minutes and give your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seeing no one, we're going to move on to reports. Amy, DDA.
Hello, everyone.
Doing.
Since our last meeting, I just wanted to give you a couple of updates here. I had the opportunity to meet with some representatives from Kawasaki Robotics and the South Lyon Community Schools. The visit that we took there last time, they had mentioned wanting to get some information from the schools to partner up with some programs. So we were able to set up a virtual meeting and get them in touch with each other. So we're anxious to see what they can come up with in the next couple of years, but they're looking forward to working together on some interim programs possibly in the next couple of years. I also had the opportunity to do a tour of Atlas Copco. Myself, Trustee Swain, some members from the Oakland County Economic Development Team, and the MADC were able to stop out there. We did a tour of one of their two buildings. They produce rivets on site. Also, they create the machines that make them. They have about 250 employees in that location. And one of the most exciting things that we heard about was they also just got a new order from the Blue Oval Plant from Ford. So they are being commissioned to do, I believe, 500 machines, which will be one of their largest orders to date. So we're very excited for them and the business that they're bringing in. We're working right now to find some additional sponsors for our Lighting Up the Grand event and our goodies on the Grand event that'll be taking place at Inspiration Park this fall and winter. We're also looking for businesses and organizations to participate in our Scarecrow on the Grand competition that's coming up. And then the trunk-or-treating program, the goodies on the grand. So if you have or know of a business or organization that wants to take part, please direct them to the DDA website at www.funonthegrand.com, and you can register through there. We're also working on actively recruiting some new subcommittee members for our Economic Vitality and Design and Appearance Committees. So if you know somebody with an interest, please send them to me. We also have a History on the Grand Walking Tour Event coming up on Friday, the 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Registration again is on our website, $25 per person. You'll have an opportunity to tour New Hudson Inn, the cemetery over there, and that will be led by Jennifer Redfern Siler, who does a lot of the history projects in the areas, worked on some of the historical books too, and works with this historical society over on South Lyon. And then I wanted to give an update too on the house over at New Hudson Drive. I wanted to let you know that that has been demoed. We're looking to do backfill tomorrow, so that is moving along quickly. And then tentatively, we're looking at breaking ground for the parking lot project over by New Hudson Inn next week sometime. So things are moving along with that. We're really excited to see how it goes. So any questions from anybody? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're moving on to the fire. It's a lot of them. AC.
Good evening. Just got a couple items here for you this evening. Station renovations that you guys approved prior or earlier this year should start this week and conclude within the month of the two dorm rooms at both stations. I'd like to invite you guys, on September 16th, starting at 8:00 in the morning, we are going to be doing our extrication training. We had four cars going to buy Hadley's towing out of Wickham, Novi area actually. And they are going to be, we're going to be doing some extrication training. If you guys would like to come and participate or see what happens during extrication training, you're more than welcome to come. I also brought one of these shirts. I just wanted to let you guys know that during the month of September, you may see our crews wearing the Yellow Rose t-shirt. What this is, is if the staff wanted to make a donation to the Yellow Rose Campaign, which supports or raises awareness for suicide prevention amongst firefighters and in the fire service. So the crew, if they made the donation and purchased one of these shirts to show their support for the organization, they are allowed to wear them throughout the month of September. In regards to our calls, we are up 122 calls this year from this time last year. Last year, we were at about 1,167. This year, we're about 1,289. As far as our fire prevention goes, this month alone, he performed 30 inspections totaling just over 550,000 square feet. And year-to-date, he's done 343, totaling just over 11 million square feet of inspections that he's performed throughout the township and the commercial properties. And finally, the thing that I have for you is, in regards to training also, our staff has trained on average 11 hours per firefighter for the month of August, either online or as in in-person training. Do you guys have any questions for me?
That's great, AC. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. LT. Sure.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. I have a couple of quick updates here. First off, Blake's Orchard, they would like the Sheriff's Office to assist them this year. The officials will be getting this request tomorrow. They're going to want a deputy there starting September 9th, running through approximately October 29th for their fall kind of festivities. They're going to want us there Saturday and Sunday for eight hours. And again, it'll be fun. It'll be a great time for members of the community to come on out, bring kids there. It'll be a good time. See here, the next up on my list is, once again, we're partnering with the DEA for our national prescription take-back. The prescription box in the Sheriff's Office is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM until 3:00 PM daily. But we like to partner up with the DEA twice a year. They'll announce it on their website, and we make it convenient for people that can't get there on a weekday to come out on the weekend. So the station will be manned Saturday, October 28th, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM for the people that can't make it during our normal business hours. And if you can't, we have a call box. You can just hit the button. A deputy will come and take the medication from you and dispose of it properly. And last up on my list is, again, once again, it's the annual Law Enforcement Special Olympics Torch Run. I'm sure you've guys have heard me talk about this every year as I participate in it. It is getting harder every year.
Looks like you've been training.
I have, I have. It's nice of you to notice. This year's going to be September 15th. We're going to get the torch at approximately 9:50 AM from South Lyon PD. We pick it up at Silver Lake and Pontiac Trail. I don't think I'm going to go first. I'm going to go last because I get to watch everybody and rest as long as possible. But we cap off the run after we make it up to Grand River, and we take Pontiac Trail northbound, I'm sorry, we take Old Plank northbound to Pontiac Trail. We meet up with Wickham, and we'll hand it off at approximately 10:45. Our leg is 5.6 miles in length. Like I said, it's getting harder and harder every year, so please be patient. And if you guys are there, some words of encouragement, some honking, that really gets us going. Sometimes people yell at us for slowing up traffic, but I'll ask for forgiveness in advance because it's me completely. That concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions for me? Okay.
Man, it's hard to believe that's already here again.
I know.
Time is going by so fast.
I wasn't expecting it. It was like a mother...
I was thinking you did twice a year.
Well, no. I like you. I can pull my cord.
Thank you, LT.
Yeah, I'll see you guys soon.
All right, moving on, Planning Commission.
Okay, we had two meetings in the month of August. The first one was Monday, August 14th. We did not have any public hearings, but under old business, we reviewed the private road text amendments. And the Planning Commission worked really hard on this, and the help of Brian's office and Brian. And we think we're set, we're ready and set for a public hearing, so Brian is going to take care of that. We had outdoor dining standards, and that's a text amendment, and we have been continually reviewing this. We got some input from Amy on the DDA, and Brian's going to, we're going to come back with some more suggestions, and we're going to, we need more review on this, on this text amendment. Under new business, we have murals, and we have really not had anything like that in our township. But Brian felt that it was probably a need to start working on that, and because we do have some older buildings that might maybe require or get a mural. So we wanted to have a text amendment that helped establish the standards, maybe colors and that. So Brian's going to bring that back. He had some suggestions. And then our last, we had a site plan approval extension that was a text amendment. And this is what we're going to do, or we suggest that we're going to do, is extend the, the site plan approval to 24 months. We've had a lot of these come in, and we, they just can't meet the standards now with their approvals from other, you know, other entities. It's taking so much longer, and it just doesn't seem realistic. And this actually came from, I think, from Catherine and Brian because we've had a lot of extensions. They just can't seem to meet it. So it made logical sense to us, but we are going to keep the 12-month extension. So that's, that's an update. And then we just had a brief on the master plan. And then our next meeting was August 28th, and we had no public hearings, and we had no, no old business. But we did have a JIT Truck Well Edition Site Plan. It's over here on north of Grand River, west of South Hill Road. And they are looking to lease their property, but they are finding that they need more truck wells and a larger parking lot. So they met all of our ordinances, and so we found that to be agreeable to the Planning Commission. And then we had our master plan review. So Brian brought several major points that the committee or the Planning Commission discussed, and he's going to bring, and we're still going to have another continued discussion about the master plan. It's really shaping up well, and I appreciate it, Brian. I know it's been a while, but they've really worked hard and brought a lot of good ideas to the township. So that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Okay. We're going to move on. ZBA, please, anything?
There was no August meeting, and sadly, there is no September meeting.
Well, we're doing something right. That's good.
That is true. Where do you go, Brian?
Okay. Moving on. Dave, building?
Hello, everybody. How you doing? I just got a couple of things to talk about. We had a, had a meeting with, about Hudson Towns with Robertson Brothers. We had a good meeting with them, and things are moving forward over there. They're, they're pretty excited. They think that they're going to be breaking ground for a building by October, October 1st. So they're going to have to move quite fast getting their roads and everything, and I don't think it's going to happen. But anyway, that's their plan. And I know, I know a couple of the superintendents that are going to be working over there. One of them's ones that worked right over here on Thistle, which was a great, great guy to work with, never had a problem with him. So I think, I'm thinking that, that job should go pretty smooth. We talked about how the buildings were sectioning it off, or, you know, once they start opening and closing roads and stuff. So it's going to work out good. Then we, we have had some more discussion with Amazon about the charging stations. And I know Bruce, the fire marshal, has been, has been working on them on the safety end of that, which is, which is really the most important thing over there. I don't know if they really understand what, what he wants yet, but we want to be able to shut that power right off right now, you know? So we don't have any bigger problems. So that's good. And then just for some numbers for the month, so this is the month of July, so we had 16, 16 new family residential permits issued. And compared to last year, it was exactly the same number. But the interesting thing on that is this year, the value in 2023 of the 16 houses is Compared to last year, the same number of houses, 16, is $2,884,000, almost twice as much. And I think that's just the size of the houses, plus the cost of everything has gone up, as we all know, but the larger homes, so more tax dollars. That's about all we got.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Dave? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the water. Boy, this is getting old. I get that. Everything is back in order, completely rebuilt. It's ready to go online. We've had numerous storms blow through, lots of lightning. Has taken out lots of power systems down Ten Mile, which is a corridor that we just can't seem to get enough power down. We've been working with Edison about different things. But it's taken out some major surge protectors as part of this whole ordeal that took out our reactors. So everything is rebuilt. We're having a really, really, really hard time getting these surge protectors back. Everything's backordered. We've been on the phone trying to get these things. It's been a total mess, I'll be honest with you. I'm hoping they come in soon, okay? We can't get an ETA on anything. We have a couple VFDs that we're still waiting on that myself, I don't want to turn the system back on until it's completely protected, which I think we turned it on maybe a bit soon the last time. All I can say is, as soon as these VFDs show up, as soon as the surge protectors show up, they will be wired in. The reactors are actually have flow going through them, and they have had flow going through them since we rebuilt them, but we have not added the chemical yet. And the chemical part is what softens the water. So we are, we're ready to turn it back on, but we don't have the components to turn it back on. So that's where we're setting. And I wish I could tell you when, but I can't. And that's all I have. We have great water, everyone. The water's fantastic. We're trying to enhance it. And this enhancement of softening water has been a very big project for us. We're getting very close. It's the first of two. Our second one, I hope, will be a lot smoother. I can't tell you that for sure. But believe me, it's not from not trying. I have been just on this thing night and day. I've been in business 40 years, and I've never lost sleep over something until now. And this thing keeps me up at night because we've promised to enhance the water to softening, and our first shot at it didn't really work out like we wanted it to. So I can only tell everyone to please bear with us. We're not giving up. We're going to have soft water in Lyon Township sooner than later. We have a few components coming in. I am going to order some extra things that we have them in stock. So when this stuff happens again, you know, everyone understands, I hope, COVID has just destroyed everything. I mean, everything, we, we can't get anything, everything, six months, eight months. And we can't wait that long with these pumps and these motors, and these things mean a lot to the, to the system. And they're very expensive. These are not just little motors that run a car. These are freaking humongous motors and pumps that can push 4,000 gallons a minute of water through an entire system of 90 to 100 miles a pipe. So, so we're talking about major motors. And we're going to put these, we're going to put one on, on the floor, have it ready to go. If anything ever happens again, we're going to be ready to hook it up. Same with the pump. So we're working on it, everyone. I hope you guys just bear with me. It'll be sooner than later, I promise you, and I know you've heard that over and over. That's all I can tell you, though. So thanks. But we'll get it. Promise you that. We'll get it. Okay? Anyone have any questions? Thanks, everyone, for sticking with me. We're going to get it. Okay. All right. So that finishes up our reports, and we're going to move on to unfinished business. And the first is the consideration of approval for Aspen Trails Plan Development Agreement to authorize a signature by the supervisor and clerk. This is, this has already been approved once. This is our second.
Yep, you've had your first reading on this, and in your packet is a signed agreement by Mr. Alco, who's in the crowd this evening, if you have questions. But this plan development agreement has been reviewed by myself and my Carol's office. We're, we support it, and with your support this evening, John, you could sign this agreement, and Michelle, and that would complete the plan development agreement process for Aspen Trails.
I'll move the approval of AP 22-59 and allow for the supervisor and clerk to sign the agreement.
I'll support.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, perfect. Okay, now we're going to move on. We have two unfinished ordinances. These are both second reading. First one is to clarify the license, license requirements and application procedures and qualifications for insurance, transfer, and relocation and renewal of liquor license. I don't believe anything on either one of these have really changed much.
Well, this one, I think the major thing is we added the definition for the administrative committee. So that was clear.
Okay.
Move the adoption ordinance 04-23.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And the second one is the bicycle path and sidewalk minimum standards and specifications for the construction and maintenance of the bicycle paths and sidewalks. I think these are pretty much the same.
Yeah, just a couple little word tweaks.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Motion would be in order.
I'll move the adoption of ordinance 05-23.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are going to move on to new business, and we have a special first one. The first one is the consideration to appoint the new Lyon Township Fire Chief. This is a big one for us. And we have, we have Chief Van here too, which is an awesome occasion. Just so you know, the, the three of us, the appointed committee, went ahead and had some conversations with AC about how this thing could move forward, and we come up with a great package for him, I hope. And he agrees that he likes it, and we sure hope that everyone here would get behind this, and let's appoint the new fire chief to Lyon Township.
Is that a motion?
I'd love to make that motion.
I'd love to support that motion.
All right. We have a motion, and we have support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I think it would be nice if we told the rest of the world his full name.
Well, I didn't want to say it until he became the chief. Now we can say it. Chief Reggie Madler.
Now he's got to get sworn in.
And we're going to take this opportunity to swear him in.
It's very nice.
So however you want to do that. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I'll faithfully perform, perform the duties.
Of the Office of Lyon Township Fire Chief.
Of the Office of Lyon Township Fire Chief.
In and for the Township of Lyon.
In and for the Township of Lyon.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
The State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. All right, he's taken all the pictures.
Hey, thank you, Chief Van, for coming, and thank you so much. And White Sandy, thank you so much. Thank you for everything you did for this community. I hope every, I hope everybody...
I bet you asked her. I can tell you what, it's not appropriate. What is wrong?
Okay. No, that was, that was awesome. All good. All right, we're going to move on. We have an appointment for the DDA board, and Pastor John Paycheck is here today. Payjack, I'm sorry. We just love him. He's done so much for our community, and he wants to serve on the DDA board, and I just, I think it's the, it's a perfect fit for us. And he's a great guy, and he's here today, and I would like to appoint him to the DDA board.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You want to say anything? You can. You sure can.
I thought they were all here for you.
To clear a room. So I've, I've been involved with the DDA and helping to plan and host some of the events, and I want to take the next step, getting to know people in this community and the great community that it is. I want to take the next step in helping out, and this is one way to do it. I'm honored and flattered that I've been accepted, and I work hard to make this a great place to live in. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your service.
Yeah, we do, for sure. All right. We're going to move on to the SROs. We have consideration and assignment of use of school resource officer for South Lyon High School. We got LT, and we got Superintendent Archibald.
With me, I have Superintendent Steve Archibald.
Hi, Steve.
So before you, for your consideration and review are the three contracts for the SROs, one being South Lyon East, South Lyon High School, and the deputy splits at Millennium and Centennial Middle Schools. And I think we all can agree that the SROs are important. They become just a staple in schools, an integral part of sculpting our young adults. We just wanted to be better adults, right? And grow up, and know what's right from wrong, and I think the SROs help facilitate that. So with that being said, I do have, we're doing South Lyon East, correct?
Yes.
This first one.
South Lyon. South Lyon High School.
Well, they're, they're all the same. I guess this year, Mr. Archibald and his team, they were able to secure grant funds to assist with covering the cost for SROs. So each of the school, each of the schools, the total cost for the deputy is $152,681. That's the cost of the deputy. South Lyon Schools, they're going to pay $117,446.92. That's 100% of the in-school time for each deputy at all three schools. That will leave $35,234.08 for the summertime to be covered by the township with your approval. And that will be times three for all three SROs. So I'd like to open this up to any questions. Anyone have any questions for me regarding the contract?
I just have a comment, actually. I just want to thank Superintendent Archibald and the school district for continuing year after year to partner with us and with the Sheriff's Office on such an important program. I think with every passing year, the community becomes more and more aware of the benefits of having the SROs in school, and I think they come to expect it. And so I certainly appreciate the efforts of both you gentlemen and the group that you work with, both work with, and support this board historically for this important program. And I thank the fact that, you know, all the township is covering is the cost of deputies working for us, when they'll be actually here working for us out on the road and outside of the school. And I think that's, it's a great situation, and thank you.
Thank you. We're grateful for the partnership, and actually think we sort of perhaps as a model for other school districts and municipalities across the county.
Yeah, I've been behind this since the beginning, and I think it's the best thing we could do for our kids. I mean, we've talked about some things we've got coming up that we're hoping to do, but it's just every tool we have, it could be a deterrent for something bad to happen to our children. I, I think having uniformed officers in these schools is important. I think having uniformed officers in these schools is important, and I stand behind this thing a billion percent, so you always have my support.
Thank you all so much.
I have some questions and some comments. I mean, most of, well, all of you guys know I'm a teacher, and I mean, not in South Lyon, but, you know, it's pretty scary to be involved in a lockdown, but it's reassuring as a teacher and, you know, I'm assuming, you know, as our community members, it's reassuring to know that we have Oakland County in there when you guys experience some kind of an emergency situation. So, I mean, we've all been incredibly supportive of the whole SRO program. I do have a couple questions, though. How long is the grant for? Is it for just one year?
The funding is allocated annually as part of the school aid budget. It's allocated, it used to be a competitive grant, now it's allocated on a per pupil amount, and we are allowed to carry unused dollars over from one year to the next, so I should know the spring of each year where we stand, and my goal, in addition to some other safety and security measures that we're adding throughout the district, is to be able to maintain the officers that we have without having to burden with any of the municipalities.
So I was going to ask as the next question, since Lyon historically has been the funding source, although I think you've had contributions from other communities.
I promise, if and when it comes back to that, I'll ask, I have a handout to everybody.
All right, so you'll show us your spreadsheet of who you asked and when they said no, how fast it took them to say no.
Which plus to throw me under.
Not in this room.
No.
Not at all in this room. So I, again, my goal is, and again, I appreciate the support, but is to be able to, you know, everyone has limited resources, and to be able to utilize, and thankfully the state has been very generous to us with regards to safety and security over the last few years, and we only hope that that continues.
And the next question I have is kind of like the meat and potatoes of the exhibit, because I know that this has been around for a while, and I'm looking at Exhibit A. I had some questions regarding some specifics, and obviously now is not really the time to address that because we have people in place, but in the future, like, for example, on page five where it says the selection of school resource officers, I have utmost confidence in our sheriff's office to select the appropriate candidate, and I was just wondering where the section where it says, as part of that process, the district building level of school administrators will be involved in the interview and selection. And I read, this was when we very, when we very, when we first began this whole process, I think that was part of it. Like I said, it's on Exhibit A, page five, but I have, I have no problem at all with taking that part out, where the district level build, school administrators are involved in the selection, and having our sheriff's office manage that selection process. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but in the future, when we, if we happen to kind of update this, I figured I'd give you a little heads up before the night of the agenda item. And then I also have a question regarding some specifics with the item on page five, which is the Officer Responsibilities, item number one, says the school resource officer shall act as an instructor of specialized short-term programs, and I was just curious, what are those programs and who has written them, who has authorized those materials? Because that's not really outlined, so I would just want to have that, something where that, those programs are authorized through Oakland County.
And I'm not aware of us exercising that section in the three years that I've been in the district.
Okay, so are you suggesting that we strike that, or are we suggesting, could we have that as, not, again, not for this one, but in the future, when we maybe take a little bit closer look at revamping this, or maybe updating it? Because it also says at all schools, like, does that mean all schools or just the school that is this contract? Like, does that include Salem Elementary because that's outside of Oakland County? Does that include Brummer because that's in Livingston County? So I'm just finding a couple of things to give you to maybe...
I know this contract is only good for the schools that we police, I don't own anything else, so just...
Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to have it clarified since it says in the contract all schools, but it's outside of that Oakland County jurisdiction, if we can have some clarification.
Which section is that again?
Exhibit A on page five.
Uh-huh, which?
Number one.
I got the one.
Which number?
Number one.
Oh, okay.
Second, number one, under School Resource Officer Responsibilities, the bottom.
Yeah.
I wonder if it may be there from back when things like DARE were taught by the deputies.
Well, and that's why I wanted some clarification, because if it's a, you know, if it's an Oakland County program, then of course I feel comfortable about that, but I don't know where some of these, what these programs might be, and when you have words like shall, I want to make sure that we have in place a very specific location where, who has vetted that curriculum or those programs. I have a question on item number two, where it says the SRO shall be available for student-parent and faculty member conferences. Is that for their normally scheduled hours, and if not, would, if that would be after their scheduled hours, are they financially compensated for that? So if they have to stay beyond to meet with a parent?
Yes, if anything after their normal shift, they'll submit an overtime sheet, and then I bill the schools for that.
Okay. Item number, page six, item number 12.
I guess my pages are a little bit different, I don't have a page six, so are we talking about the SRO will be given sufficient time, starts there?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that...
It's page two for me.
Oh. I think that I would prefer to see shall instead of will, that the SRO shall be given. And again, I just, I know that's a lot of discussion item, but if that's not for tonight, I'm not asking for these corrections to be made tonight, but just in the future, to make it considered.
You know what's interesting? In all the cases, the courts, it always says shall means shall and may means maybe, right?
Right.
Now, all of a sudden, if you look at all the new statutes being written by the legislature, they're dumping the word shall and putting in will.
Oh, okay.
So I guess we should probably pick one or the other.
Well, that's actually where I was, I'm fine with either one, but if we're going to have a lot of these things where it's shall, but then we have a throw-in and occasional will, I felt like that was differentiating.
Right, I get it, so we should make it consistent.
But I'll trust, I'll trust you.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Not me, I'm not the attorney.
Yeah.
And then that brings me to my next shall, which is facilities and materials. Facilities and materials, the SRO should be considered a resource for the principal's administrative staff, and I know that our resource officer in my school is never called upon to like deliver a pass to somebody's class. I don't think that that's what is expected, but I'm uneasy with that first sentence, because to say that they're considered a resource for the administrative staff, I don't know that that's within...
What's that?
I just don't, that makes it seem like he or she might be a lackey for the administrative staff, so I'm just uncomfortable with that. I also think that to say that the school board shall provide, if possible, each SRO following, the following facilities, I think they either, they either will or they won't, but not if possible. So the lighted, a properly lighted, private and secure office, I think that should be a shall. And then for the safety of school staff, the officer, again, Carol, I don't know if it's should or shall or will, but shall they be issued a portable two-way radio? I don't think should is a strong enough, strong enough word for that, so those are my comments to kind of mull over, and then in the next couple of months, maybe, if we can work toward a cleaner, more...
I will. The next version of this, I will address your concerns, and again, it'll go with the Starchibald.
May I, just to, on the one part, we only anticipate or only expect to utilize our partnership with the officers in their capacity as officers.
Right. I mean, I know that, but that's your ten, but...
Yeah, I would, I would love to get, send me the comments.
Sure.
And I could start putting it together, and we'll, I'll forward it on the board already for next year.
Right, because I know Chris and I were involved when we first started this whole process, and I forgot the white-haired guy from South, was it from the school board? Who did we meet with? We met in that office.
He was a former, he was president, yes.
Yes. So I know that this, that's how old it is.
We've never, I've never touched it.
Right.
It's been the standing thing for a while.
I feel like we might want to work toward kind of bringing it more up to date.
Updating it, stop.
But I, Carol, I'll definitely get you those.
Okay.
Those are my comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I was just going to echo a little bit of fun and thank the district for finding that, those resources and using them to cover the full in-year amount, because that removed my only prior qualm, and now I can wholeheartedly support this, so thank you.
Thanks. All right, somebody want to try to hash a motion out here for these three?
Sure, I'll make a motion for consideration for assignment and use of school resource officer for South Lyon High School in the amount of $35,234.08.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next.
I'll make a motion to approve the assignment of use and use of school resource officer for South Lyon East High School.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, keep her going. One more, let's go.
I'm making a motion for consideration and assignment of the use of school resource officers for the South Lyon Middle Schools.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Thank you so much for being good partners.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, the next one.
All right, first of all, John, I call getting this next motion. You went down all the way for this, and I'm down. I won first dibs.
Is that a motion?
We haven't even introduced it yet.
Okay, so this is a consideration to approve funding to partner with RCOC to pave approximately 150 feet. Now, originally, when he brought this to me, it was 350 feet, and when they actually drew it up, it became 150 feet, which is still a really nice entrance to Travis Road. This road has been a problem. People tried to pull out on Milford Road because it's very busy and rut that up completely, and it's very dangerous. So this, for $24,450, they're going to pave and they're going to do a little bit of gutter and some ditching. They won't run the gutter all the way back, but they're going to come about 40 feet, and I think this is a great deal. I think this is a wonderful deal, and I hope you guys consider approving this.
John, we've had a long history of partnering with the road commission on projects like this too, and I think that as often as they can bring projects like this that make such great sense and are really, for pennies on the dollar compared to what the actual cost of doing this would be through our partnership, we should keep entertaining them.
So, you know, they told me that they spend so much time grading this road in the beginning there where they rut it up, that this is really a fraction of what it's going to cost them, so, and I believe it, and it's a wonderful thing.
Well, John, I feel like I would like to make a motion to approve the funding to partner with RCOC to pave approximately 150 feet entrance of Travis Road west off Milford Road in an amount not to exceed $24,450.
Perfect.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic, thank you. Okay, we're going to move the next one to consider approval of the millage rate, and Patty, you want to?
Yeah, I bring this to you every year. The board of commissioners at Oakland County need to approve our millage rates by September 30th, and, you know, we will be starting to work on our budgets, and so the millage rates have not changed, so they actually, inflation was higher than our rate of growth, so they will stay exactly the same, which is kind of nice for us, and so that's what I'm asking tonight for approval, so I can send it on to Shannon, so she can get it on the board of commissioners' agenda, so we're not late.
And Patty, if the library bonds are sold, that would get added to this later?
No, they won't, they won't be in time, yeah. They're, we talked to, well, we've been in contact with the library board, but at our last, well, I wasn't at the last meeting, I think Robert was, but the meeting before that, we have a couple meetings coming up. I think they don't think the design will be ready in time, because it's got to be, I have to be able to roll it on the taxes, so I have to have it by mid, at least mid-November, and that's not enough time to even, they're working on the design, it's a design build, and still, and then it has to go out for bid, so it won't be probably till January or February, so we'll not be on anyone's taxes until next winter.
Yeah, because they still have to establish a guaranteed maximum price for bond council to approve the sale of bonds legally, so we're...
Yep, that's right, so we're, it's just, and, you know, let them take their time, they're designing a big building, a lot of, you know, a lot of things to figure out, and, you know, they want to do it right, and the voters have already said yes, and so the money is going to be there when they're ready for it, so, so, not quite this time, but probably 2024 for sure will be out there.
Not to beat this, but then that just means that as soon as they're ready to issue the bonds, the bonds can be sold, the funds will be received, and then it would just be rolled on the next winter tax.
That's correct.
So it's not a delay until then that they can't start.
Yep, they'll probably have to do, depending on when it is, they might have to ask for a little more to cover the interest, if you get your money too early before you can actually get the funding in, and we do that with many bonds, special assessments, bonds, anything like that, so, yes, when they're, when they're in need, that process will start, but it's got to be after the bids are approved, and then the clock ticks for that, and it takes about three months, so, yep.
Make a motion to approve the 2024 tax rate request, L4029 millage rate.
I'll support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, thank you guys, appreciate that.
We're going to move on to our contract with Oakland County for assessing the equalization contract.
I guess the question I had is why is it so long? I guess the biggest issue is, they are making some significant changes in this contract, but not that will impact you. A lot of other townships have been having Oakland County actually do all their work with their steady tax appeals, and the county no longer really has the staff to do that. So a lot of the changes in this contract deal with township's obligation to retain your own council and all that kind of stuff, which you've been doing anyway.
Yeah.
So it's not going to change the way you've been operating, it just is a lot longer because it's addressing issues for other communities, it does change it for them.
Oakland County does a great job for us.
Yeah.
They really do, and so does Stephanie.
So does Stephanie, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, just in assessing, you know...
Correct.
They actually do a great job, they're well worth their money.
Which is what makes it easy when we get into these issues.
Yes, yep.
Some of the other communities have totally relied on the county to do everything for them, and the county can no longer do that, so...
Okay, everyone okay? Motion be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract between Oakland County Equalization and Lyon Township, yeah, as submitted for the assessment contract from 2023 through 2025 as presented.
Okay.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on, consideration, consider proposal to update parks and recreation master plan. All right?
Thank you, John. So the board may or may not know that to apply for any grant funding through Michigan Department of Natural Resources, we have to have an active parks and recreation plan, and we just received notice from the grant coordinators, oh, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago, that your plan is expiring as of the end of the year, and we would not be able to apply for grants come the spring, and it just so happened to coincide with a request that Leslie brought forward, that we should be pursuing grant funding for 11 Mile Park now that we have the project with the library and connections to the trail along 11 Mile, and that was the impetus for it, but we've got a lot of other things now that you own the trail and so on, it just makes sense to have this active plan on the books. The last time you adopted your parks and rec plan was 2019, and since then, the DNR has made some changes to the requirements of plans, so the big ones being, we have to do an accessibility, accessibility assessment, which is to go to every one of your parks facilities that would be publicly accessible and assess them for ADA compliance, so that does take some time.
Does that, sorry, does that include only owned and operated by the township or anything we include in the inventory?
Just, well, just township-owned. Just, well, just township-owned. We will still inventory other facilities, we'll update it. If you recall the last plan, we had fields on the high schools and other things, privately-owned facilities, but we do not need to do the accessibility assessment on those, so. For the most part, though, looking through the documents, a lot of the goals and objectives are gonna stay the same. There's not, there's not a ton that has changed there. We do have to do an update to the public engagement, so our proposal is to create, I wanna use a product called Social Pinpoint to create an online map where people can drop pins and put comments anywhere throughout the township, which I think is a cool way to do that, and it's helpful. And the way that I would communicate that to your residents is, one, through your website, which is pretty easy, I'll put a link to that site, but two, along the trails and in places like the park up here, give a small poster-based sign that'll stay out for a few weeks. It'll have a QR code that people can scan and go directly to that link as well. So, while they're out enjoying the park, they can submit some comments. So, I think that's a good way to do that. And then, I guess the last item that I wanna highlight on here is that, well, two, the, the last plan we ran through, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board before it came to the township board, I'd like to bring all of our updates directly to the township board. That helps in two ways. It keeps things, keeps you well informed, and it keeps us on our very tight timeline. So, we do have to adopt the plan by February 1st, or I have to have everything submitted by February 1st, which means if you wanted to move forward and not schedule an additional township board meeting just to adopt a plan, we should have all of our public review time periods and everything done, and have the document ready for adoption at your January board meeting. So, if you were to authorize this, we would get started right away. We'd get moving on all of the steps that we need to have done, and we would have a draft to you, I'm sorry, we would have that document to the township board in adaptable format by January of 2024. So, the not to exceed amount that we're proposing is $10,000 for the work. Again, a lot of that is gonna go towards the updated survey and the accessibility inventory. I can take any questions that you might have?
Brian, will this be mostly conducted by you then, or will you have someone else working on this with you?
I'll have somebody else doing a lot of the fieldwork.
Okay.
We have several of our staff members who are doing these accessibility ratings throughout our Oakland County townships and cities, so they're well versed at that, and that way I don't slow down reviews.
Thank you.
I can keep, keep your master plan moving now that we have the full draft sitting out there, and so, I'm gonna give a lot of that work, but I will still be responsible for quality control and giving you updates and presenting to the board.
Brian, I, I just have one comment. I guess in terms of the public input part, what you said is pretty good. I just wanna make sure we don't exclude individuals who may not have either good access to the internet or maybe older and not as technologically savvy as others. So, if there's another means that can, if you have it posted in the park, perhaps even a hard copy that somebody could scribble on or something like that, I don't know, just make sure we don't exclude any segments.
Yeah, and I'm happy to figure out a, well, there's not gonna be a direct link between the paper copy and the Social Pinpoint, but, but I will work on a solution so we have some sort of paper input that's available here at the township.
Really quick, first of all, I think this is a very reasonable price, and we've got an aggressive timeline, and it's gonna kinda be a little bit of a drop everything and work on this for Brian and his group, so I'm good with that. Made me think, though, it's been three years since we've done our required annual update of our CIP, so maybe we should get on the stick with that, because we need to be doing it every year, not when we remember to do it.
I can actually update you on that. We've been working on it behind the scenes, so we do have.
It's like a secret reveal?
Kinda, sorta.
So, like next month?
Let me check on that, but I would like to have that to you before you adopt a budget later on. So, I know you're gonna be having your budget, budget hearings in the next few months, so I'd like to have that to you beforehand, absolutely.
So, you're gonna, okay, has the PC worked out with you yet, or you still have to go through them with the?
I've now presented it to the PC. We have staff working on it who are harassing the department heads and working with Leslie. I know Leslie's team has been providing a lot of information too, so I'd like to have a draft to the planning commission in full, and then let them comment on that afterwards.
That sounds excellent.
Yeah, all right. Okay, I will, if everybody's ready, I'll make a motion to approve the update to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for an amount not to exceed $10,000.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to discussion of possible adoption of Lion meeting rules. And I have a couple questions. We, we were usually giving the applicants 20 minutes, and we've moved that to 10? You only really?
This are some proposed things that were put together for discussion purposes, and one of the things you need to discuss is the timeline. I know we have in the past been giving people 20 minutes, but in all honesty, what I sit through, so much of the time is spent on, let me introduce our design team and this kinda stuff, instead of really getting to the information that's needed. I think when you look at, look at what people present in those 20 minutes, they could do it in 10. And again, that 10 is for them speaking. It's, it's extended when somebody says, I have a question about this, okay? It's not like 10 minutes and you're out regardless if you were asked questions. So, I mean, that's up to you. But I think some of these, it goes on and on, and you feel like, okay, we're supposed to use up 20 minutes, and a lot of it's air. So, and again, all these timelines can be extended.
That's, I like the shorter target, but this, just adding the maybe extended like it has in some of the other spots to that point.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, we don't get ourselves in trouble.
But the other part too is the two minutes. I mean, we've always given them three.
Right. Yeah, but I, but the, at least what I was getting was, from input was three was too long. I mean, we really only have to have an issue where we have to enforce these rules, because we only need these rules when we have an issue where we have a lot of people that wanna speak, okay?
Right.
I mean, generally, if somebody's here on just a night, they'll speak less than two minutes. They're just randomly appearing and wanna tell you something. So, the concept is, is to set some time limit when you have so many people that are gonna speak, because a lot of it is repetitive, okay? And it makes them not repeat, because they have a limited time period. Okay, somebody said that, so I'm gonna hit that. Again, this is a discretionary thing for you, but I know you've all seen when, the longer you give them, you give them three minutes, you give them five minutes, they will take that whole time, and a lot of it's just repeating what was already said.
And, and to be honest, I, I am really lenient with the people who talk, because I think if they've taken the time to come here and, and they have things to say, I, I hate to cut them off. So, if this is discretionary, I mean, if, if the place isn't full of people and that we have to get through some things where we have to adopt, we have to actually, you know, use the two-minute rule, I guess I'd be okay.
Can we put the timer up?
Yeah, but I mean, normally, I'd like to give everyone their opportunity to speak.
That's the concept, setting time limits, but these can always be, you can always extend them. But at least people coming in know, this is my timeline. I'm preparing what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna get right to the point.
I really do like that John provides an opportunity for people to speak, and sometimes, John, I think you're a little bit too nice when it goes a little bit off the beaten path of the main topic. Not when somebody's, you know, is staying on topic, it's just sometimes it spirals a little bit. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with three minutes, and if that is gonna be discretionary in the last bullet item where it says, in the event that there are a limited number of persons, the township board, should it say the township board and/or supervisor in its or his discretion? Because I don't, I don't think we all have to agree. It's John's meeting, so I'm comfortable with John having that discretion. I don't think we need to have the entire board. That's just the last, that last bullet item?
Yeah.
So, I, I'm comfortable with that. And then, since we're talking about that last item and my English teacher thought process, could you, can you move that item to after bullet number four, which talks about the limits, because you're giving the limits if we have a whole lot of people there in the two minutes, and then right after that, you're following with, hey, if we don't have a lot of people, we can extend it. So, I, the last bullet in public participation.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't wanna, I, I don't wanna be too sticky when it comes to our residents, because they are residents, and I, I, you know, the applicant part, I'm not as worried about that, because they're coming in our place to do business, but our residents, I feel a little bit, you know, we, we should let them talk, and I'd like to keep that at three minutes. I think three minutes is pretty good, I mean.
Three's good with me.
I'd agree, and I also think that the applicants are, I, I think the reason we could kind of curtail some of their time is because they've already got a packet.
Right.
Someone stands at a podium, we don't know, if they're here to speak about something not on the agenda, so we really, they may need some time to kind of bring us up to speed on what it is that's concerning them before they even get into, you know, kind of what action they're seeking, so, you know.
But they're nervous.
Yeah, they're nervous.
And they aren't that used to public speaking.
Yeah.
Where a developer is very used to going to board meetings, and so, I totally agree with all of you, so.
But I do like that.
But I like the 10 minutes.
I love the 10 minutes.
I do too, because they, they, it's.
It's too long.
It's too long.
Yeah, we've already got the packet, we've already gone through their materials. Usually, they go back through quite a bit of what's already been provided.
Several times.
You know, in, in our packet, and, you know, I understand that's just part of them making a full professional presentation, but 10 minutes is pretty reasonable.
I do too.
Carol, I, I have a question on the last item for, or the item where it says eliminate, or where it's about public participation in public hearing sections with the shall not interrupt by voice clapping or otherwise showing approval or disapproval of any remarks of the speaker who is addressing the township board, or question a person who is addressing the township board. I have a very difficult time with that.
That's a basic rule of decorum for a public meeting.
I do understand that.
And that's the stuff that should not take place.
I do understand that. I, I guess.
How enforceable are we, we're gonna start?
Yeah.
You sit down, you stop clapping.
No, the point is, the point is, these rules sit there, and hopefully people read them, and hopefully people respect them, okay? That's the point of putting things like that in.
Right.
Reminding people, this isn't a free-for-all, it's not a party, okay? This is, this is, this is public business is being conducted, so, but, you know, act accordingly. So, it's just a reminder, come in, you know, and act like an adult and address the business, okay?
I, I agree with that. Could you, could we, like, add maybe a clarification of, like, cause disruption that would, by interrupting, by voice clapping? Because if somebody's like, yeah, you know, I agree, and that's it, like, are we booting them out?
Yeah, we're not supposed to be doing.
Well, I know that, but we just, somebody just made a comment up here, and there was kind of a murmur of agreement in the audience, so it's kind of a natural thing, like, oh, yeah.
It's a difference between a murmur and something.
Right. Well, that's why I'm asking, can we put something in there where it's more clarifying, to say, shall not cause disruption?
I think that's what that says, though. That's all disrupting activities.
So, like, do you want it to say, instead of shall not interrupt, say, like, shall not disturb the meeting by, or, I mean, is that the, the sticking?
I feel like those people aren't going to read this anyhow if they do. It's not a question.
I know, I know, I'm a big first-person person, I'm having a hard time with this. Like, I just, I, I understand that that is part of public comments, or a part of public participation and public decorum, and I wish that people would follow that, and I completely understand your point.
A little minor doesn't hurt, though.
I, I understand that. I'm just simply saying that that is one, that is a very difficult section for me, that I would just maybe like the word, shall not cause disruption.
Of any kind?
Of any kind, Mr. O'Neill.
Whatsoever.
Whatsoever. So, your disruptions in interruption by, by voice is not, it's gonna get you kicked out of this.
The rules haven't approved yet.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a violation until they're approved.
That's true.
So, next time.
So, I, I'm just, that's, that's the last part of my comment. I, I'm not saying that that's a, and I'm gonna derail this whole thing, I'm just wanting to put that out there that I am uncomfortable with that. And I would prefer to have something more specific, like disrupt.
Well, maybe they'll take the two minutes and come up. That way they're not disrupting.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would hope that.
I'm fine with it, that's the way it is, 'cause I don't like when they do that.
I hate it when they do it, too.
It's very disturbing. We don't, we, I don't, can't even think, how many people have we ever even asked to leave?
None.
So, it's not like that, it's just.
The point is, you're not gonna throw them out necessarily for doing it, because you can't, I mean, unless they're truly disrupting the peace, you can't throw them out, right?
No.
But the point is, you're saying to them, we expect this behavior when you're here, and you could call them out for not doing it, and the whole audience knows that they've looked at the rules, that they're not supposed to do it. So, it's just that type of thing. And we don't.
I think it's all good.
So, would we post these, like, next to the agenda?
Yeah, you just, don't just be something.
We could, and then we would definitely put them on the website. We can put them in the packet.
We can put them on that big board we're doing there up there.
Yeah, a lot of communities just have it, it's like the first thing in their packet after their agenda.
Yeah.
Every month, and then I just, they'll have one that sits on the table or on the wall, whatever. It's all this.
Okay.
And I mean, we could tweak whatever you want, it's just that I was told we wanna get going on this, so.
I, I think it's a, it's a net improvement, and I'm comfortable starting with it as is, and we can tweak it as we think of other things.
Well, I've got some, some things that I've gleaned from you that I can work on and bring it back. The other point is too, is I think one of the concepts of doing this was, you know, sometimes the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, for example, they're not quite sure what they're supposed to be doing. So, when the board sets some rules, then we'll carry those rules through to those other meetings so they know, you know, how they're supposed to conduct the meeting, and the public knows how they're supposed to behave. So, it will help them too, because they're just, you know, regular people volunteering to do something.
So, clarifying that, this is setting the expectations for all of our public meetings, regardless of the body.
Right.
You should say that, tell them.
That's okay. Well, I mean, I mean.
Should, should we replace the bit about the, through the supervisor then, to say, like, through the chair or something to generalize it?
Right, that's gonna be tweaked for each one. And some of this, I'm looking at, because this is a real rough draft, I didn't realize it was gonna go on as a rough draft, but, you know, we, a lot of these things, we want the, for you, the supervisor will be making the call. You don't wanna have a board vote on, you know, let's have a board vote on whether he was disrupt, disrupted. That's gonna say, please.
But the reason we had done this was because Chris had a point and he had asked, and I said, well, basically, our rules are really at the bottom of our agenda here, and it does say two minutes per address will be allowed.
It does say two minutes now, that's your current rule.
Yeah. So, that's why she left, had that in there.
Okay.
But we were just looking as to how and why.
So, I always tell them three.
Yeah.
No, and the other thing people don't understand is, they don't understand that they can't get up repeatedly.
Yeah.
Okay, so then now they know. You get up, you get one shot, okay? They also don't understand, hey, it's a public hearing, so I speak during that public hearing versus I come up during the call to the public. But it kinda helps everybody know what they're supposed to do and when they're supposed to speak.
I like it. Okay, we good with that?
Are you gonna bring it back?
You know, I brought in some more.
Okay.
Yeah, but I mean, we're good with it. You got a couple things that you can do, so.
Yeah, I'll work on some changes. Maybe I'll just, yeah, I'll work on some changes and look at it, and then.
And we can boost it once it's final.
Or wanna change the application forms then for the applicants to let them know they have 10 minutes, and that kind of thing, but, so, we'll do one.
Along with the bottom of the agenda.
All right, so, let me make some more tweaks to this, and then we'll get it, and we'll next one.
Carol, can we make sure that Dave enforces?
Hey, you're out of line.
I'll be waiting you there.
Come to the podium, state your name here, too.
Yeah, start the timer.
What do you say?
What we did is 40 now.
Make sure that Dave's gonna enforce those rules.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, are we, are we good then?
Yeah.
Is everybody good? Anything else we need to talk about?
I'll work on bringing back.
Okay.
Okay, well, that concludes our agenda for tonight, and if no one else has anything to talk about, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
I was babysitting her.
What's this?
From RCOC.
Yeah, we're getting one little pocket, it's coming right through.
I just washed it.
No, it did, I just.
No, it did, I just.